I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Huntsville for February 25, 2014, to order. Give us just a moment to get settled in. And we have a new member with us tonight, filling an open position on the Planning Commission. And I'd like to just specially recognize Kyle. And as we get down, as we go through the introductions of the Planning Commission, when we get to you, Kyle, if you'll just tell us a little bit about yourself, we'd like that. But I'm going to start on this end.
Good evening. I'm Les Tillery, Fuquay and Partners Architects.
Tony Antonio's Medallion Builders.
John Elschevsky, City Councilman.
Sharon Tyson, Community Volunteer.
Kimberly Battle, Ammerdick.
Janet Watson, Retired Builder and Developer.
Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Peggy Richard, Realtor.
Kyle Collins, joining the Planning Commission. I've been in Huntsville 15 years, formerly with Colonial Properties, now Colliers International and Commercial Real Estate for about 28, 29 years.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor Battle's Office.
And I'm Marie Bostic, Planning Staff.
And we also have you, you probably can't see her back there, but we have Claudia Anderson with the Legal Department to make sure that we do it right. So this has been a day of excitement and sadness for the members of the Planning Commission because we found out late yesterday that Marie Bostic is planning to leave the city after quite a few years. And we'd like to just take a moment to talk about Marie. I'm sure there will be more formal proceedings later. But Marie is a highly respected figure in the planning and development community. She served in the city's Planning Department for the past 26 years. In addition to the daily management of planning initiatives and supervising a staff of 33, Ms. Bostic has been the primary point of contact for the city regarding land use projects with developers, engineers, and realtors. She was a key facilitator in numerous public-private projects, including Twickenham Stairs, I'm sorry, Twickenham Square and the Avenue. Other highlights of her professional career include the update of the city's subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances, and overseeing the transition of the zoning enforcement functions of the city from the Inspection Department to a newly created Zoning Administration Division. Marie is well-known for her advocacy on the environment, arts, downtown revitalization, historic preservation, and baseball. She served as the project lead on all greenway development and open space acquisition, including the Hayes Nature Preserve, Goldsmith Schiffman Wildlife Sanctuary, and Wade Mountain Preserve. She was most recently honored as Downtown Advocate of the Year 2012-2013, and recipient of the Benjamin Banneker Award from Alabama A&amp;M University's Department of Community Planning and Urban Studies Alumni Association. Marie's personal interests are focused in environmental preservation and enjoying the outdoors. In her new position, she will serve as Executive Director of the Land Trust of North Alabama. Her leadership and presence will be missed dearly in City Hall, but we all know that she will continue to serve our community in many helpful ways through her role with the Land Trust. Thank you, Marie, for those 26 years you've been with the city. And we will, Ms. Marie, she has been just amazing to work with for those of us who have been involved in the real estate community in Huntsville. She's just been an amazing source of information and help. Tell you a little bit, most of you have been here before, but I'll just briefly tell you what we're going to be doing tonight. There will be public hearings first, after we adopt the minutes. And during the public hearing, if you're here with an interest in anything on the agenda of the public hearing, you're welcome to go to one of the microphones on either side of the room, give your name and address, and speak relative to the item on the agenda. I will ask that if there are people here, more than one person here, on a particular item, that you pay careful attention to what the speakers ahead of you are saying, and as we will on the Planning Commission. And be careful not to repeat what your neighbors say because we are very interested in what you have to say, and when you say it, we hear it. Our first item of business is adoption of the minutes.
Move to approve?
That's the minutes of January 28, 2014. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are adopted. Public hearings. First item is Capital Park at 72 subdivision. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Capital Park? Hearing, no comment. The public hearing's closed. Coventry Phase 3 at McMullen Cove, a re-subdivision of lots 14 through 21 of Coventry Phase 2 at McMullen Cove, re-subdivision of Track 3 of Coventry Cove at McMullen, I'm sorry, a re-subdivision of Track 3 of Coventry Phase 1 at McMullen Cove. Is there anyone here to speak with regard to Coventry Phase 3? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Item 3 is Cruz Place subdivision, a re-subdivision of Lot 1 and other lands, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Cruz Place subdivision? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Item 4 Huntsville Park, a re-subdivision of Lot 1, Lot 27, a minor. Is there anyone here regarding Huntsville Park? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Item 5 Meadows Boulevard Connector Road. Is there anyone here regarding Meadows Boulevard Connecting Road? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing is closed. Item 6 Overland Cove Phase 2, a re-subdivision of Track A of Overland Cove. Is there anyone here regarding Overland Cove? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Item 7 Strong Commercial Center subdivision, Phase 2, a re-subdivision of lots 2 and 3 of Strong Commercial Center Phase 1, a re-subdivision of Lot 2 of Strong Commercial Center subdivision, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Strong Commercial Center? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Item 8 Walnut Cove 2, Phase 2 at Lake Forest. Is there anyone here regarding Walnut Cove 2? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Next item is Item 9, location, character, and extent, and we have two items under that. The first one is Jones Park Parking Upgrade and Park Improvements. Is there anyone here regarding Jones Park Parking Upgrade? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing is closed. Item B is Electric Vehicle Quick Charger. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Electric Vehicle Quick Charger? Yes, ma'am?
Excuse me. I'm Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive, and I'd like for somebody to explain that since it's got COH out beside of it, City of Huntsville. I guess that's City of Huntsville. Somebody could explain what that is?
Marie, would you tell us about that briefly?
I'll give it my best shot. It is basically a donated charger that can charge an electric vehicle within 15 minutes. It was donated by, do you remember who donated the?
Nissan.
Nissan. Nissan donated the charger to the city. It's going to be placed on Fountain Circle right here in front of City Hall. So you'll basically pull into a parking space, and if you have an electric vehicle, you can pull in there, and you put money in a meter, just like a parking meter, and then you can plug in and charge your car.
Are they renting the space, or we're just giving it to them?
No. The meter's going to be calibrated so that you're paying for the electricity and the parking space.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Marie. Any further comments on the Electric Vehicle Quick Charger? Okay. Hearing, no further comments. Public hearing is closed. Item 10 is zoning. Lisa Letta, would you give us the items of zoning, starting with Item A, Overton Annexation Zoning?
This is located on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Buford Drive. It's a total of 45.72 acres. The proposed zoning is Residence 1B District, which is consistent with the zoning in that area, and it's the site of a proposed single-family neighborhood.
Is there anyone here to speak on Overton Annexation Zoning? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing is closed. Item B is the Drake Annexation Zoning?
This is a total of 26.66 acres, located on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Hampton Ridge Drive. It's that hatched area you see here. The proposed zoning is Residence 1A District, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning, and this would be an extension of the existing subdivision.
Is there anyone here to speak with regard to Drake Annexation Zoning? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing is closed. Next item is Hypes Annexation Zoning?
This is 0.42 acres, located east of Old Jim Williams Road and on the north side of Martin Road. The proposed zoning is Neighborhood Business C1 zoning, which is consistent with the adjacent property, and this will be the expansion of a business there on the east side of Old Jim Williams Road.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding Hypes Annexation Zoning? Hearing, no comment. Public hearing's closed. Our next item is the Zoning Ordinance Amendment for Urban Agriculture, and Ashley is going to give us information on that. Thank you, Ashley.
The Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendment for Urban Agriculture, this is a revised version of the initial proposal we brought forth to Planning Commission in September. It was sent back to Planning Staff and the zoning committee for further review and consideration. And we would like to present our revisions that we have created today with the help of many members of the urban agricultural community. We have revised our definitions, and we now have three versus our previous seven definitions we initially had. Community gardens are defined as an area of land managed and properly maintained by a group of individuals to grow and harvest food crops and/or non-food crops, ornamental crops such as flowers for beautification, personal consumption, or donation. Community gardens may also be divided into separate plots for cultivation by one or more individuals, or formed collectively by members of a group. Community gardens do not include any type of garden that are adjacent to or associated with a residential dwelling or an urban farm. There was a little confusion with the earlier definition that home gardens would be considered community gardens, so the Planning Staff wanted to provide a little clarity and differentiate between the two. Farmers markets are defined as a market conducted outdoors in an unenclosed shelter where retail sales and demonstration of homegrown products, including produce, ornamental crops, meat, eggs, and other agricultural products, homemade value-added products, including baked goods, jams and jellies, pickles and relish, dried fruits, syrups and honeys, and homemade arts and crafts, and unique local goods are conducted by the vendor engaged in the production of such products. This does not include the sale or demonstration of mass-produced products, used clothing, appliances, or other similar products. In our final definition, urban farm is defined as a premises in which farming is conducted, including the growing of fruits, vegetables, and other plant products, and raising of livestock for commercial sales, personal use, consumption, donation, and/or for educational purposes. This does not include gardens customary to residential occupancy and buildings incidental to. Again, there was a little confusion earlier on the home gardens, urban farms, and community gardens, so we wanted to add language to make that clear. The proposed farmers market language would be added within our commercial districts, which would include C3, C4, C5, and our airport commercial districts, our industrial districts, which are light industry-heavy and commercial-industrial park, and also our medical districts. Community garden would be added as a permitted use in our commercial districts, which would include C1, C3, C4, C5, and our airport commercial districts, as well as our industrial districts, including light industry-heavy and commercial-industrial park. And finally, our urban farms would be added as a permitted use in our commercial districts, C4, C5, and airport commercial industrial districts, light and heavy industry, planned industrial, airport industrial, and commercial-industrial park districts, our medical districts, medical and medical 2, as well as research park districts, Research Park, Research Park West, applications and applications 2. Currently, our community gardens, if there are any currently in town, they all operate on the variance, so the Planning Staff has suggested that we add them as a special exception versus having to apply for a variance every time the applicant wishes to come forth. Community gardens located on non-residential lots and in common areas on residential lots within our residential districts 11A, 1B, 1C, 22A, 2B, and 2C would be permitted as a special exception, provided that they conform with our applicable zoning regulations in their respective district, and they also must be located in the rear yard of lots with a primary structure. Farmers markets located within our residential districts and neighborhood business would also be added as a special exception, and those that currently exist within our city limits also have variances as well. And urban farms located in our residential districts would also be permitted as a special exception, provided that they apply to the applicable regulations, and also no commercial sales on premises are allowed. Only off-site would be permitted.
You look like there may be some more.
I'm there.
She stopped. Okay. Thank you very much. That was very informative. Is there anyone here to comment on the zoning ordinance amendment for urban agriculture? If so, would you go to either side and give your name and address at the microphone?
I'm back. I understood that this came in into the City Hall with the chicken ordinance, and you all separated it into urban agriculture from the chicken ordinance. We did have a good battle on the chicken ordinance, and I want to thank each and every one of you that turned it down. Mayor Battle accepted defeat, but it's not gone for good. Nothing ever goes away at City Hall, but believe me. But tonight, yes, I'm on the urban agriculture also. I say, I still say, if you want to pull up the city limit signs, that's what we should be doing up here tonight, instead of pulling up signs to let farmers grow and Bill take over the city again. Put Madison County out there and pull up the city limit signs. Turn this into a county, and we won't need a mayor. That's the way I look at it. You've allowed so much in half of the city up there, and there's a lot over there in old west Huntsville that won't even allow a car lot. It's zone industrial. A lot of the city that you all don't know about has changed the zoning ordinances. That's not true, Marie. Own Seventh Avenue and a lot of those places over in there in the neighborhoods, that's zoned, where you can have all this kind of stuff. And if you want to plow up your yards, turn them into farm crops, and go sell them at the market, why don't you just open up the whole city, let people have garage sales, sell their appliances, sell their clothes, and let everybody have equal in this city? What you're doing is separating this city. It's just like the chicken ordinance. We had chickens in the city, and if your neighbor didn't fuss, leave it alone. We've got people now that can grow tomatoes and grow what they want to eat in this city, just like the chicken ordinance. But if you want to turn these people loose and let them farm in the city, once again, I'm against that. Don't put your corn crop next door to my house, because there's not enough room. But if these people want to live in the country, I'll help you, through a real estate, move to the country. I think this is wrong. I think you need to let this lie and die, just like the chicken ordinance. I think it's wrong that you're allowing this to go on. It's the same thing as a chicken ordinance, except it's a word a little bit different. Let the people want to grow their garden, have their gardens. People want to raise crops and go to farmer, take them to the market, farmers market, and sell all this stuff. They can go to country and dig up half of the country and go sell it. I'm against it again. I'm standing firm on it. And like I said, pull up the city limit sign and let them turn us loose. Turn us all loose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. My name is Jane Smith, and I live at 10444 Fielding Drive, and I want to speak on behalf of the farmers market. We had agreed on the ordinance that we had before, but since then, we have come to realize there's been some changes. Some issues have come up that we did not know about, that were included, including music and a few things. We would just like to ask for some time to work with the Planning Commission, the zoning commission, before we can bring this up for a vote. I'm going to let some of the other managers speak to it. The whole purpose for adding a little bit more to it, our whole purpose is to help the farmer make a sustainable living. And some of the things that we bring in, like music, or a few other things, it's only to bring our community together, our neighborhoods together, and they have a great time at our farmers markets. They join together and see each other, which they haven't seen in a very long time sometimes. So it's a great community effort, and we just want to make our farmers markets always about the farmer. So everything we do that would be an added attraction or anything would simply be to help the farmers bring the people in to buy the fresh produce. So we just want a little bit more time to work on this, and we do appreciate all that the Planning and zoning commission has done on our behalf, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Sharon Drakless with the Bailey Cove Farmers Market, and I also would like to address the changes in the market on the cooking of the food and also the entertainment. And as I went through, I started thinking about on the different markets that I've been to in the larger cities, such as San Francisco, Charleston, New Orleans, and all of those markets have entertainment. They have vendors who cook. They have vendors selling drinks of different sorts and kinds. The farmers are there with their produce of herbs, fresh flowers, vegetables, meats, and things like that. And I'm hoping, I went to those markets because I was hoping one day that Huntsville would have that kind of a market. So I'd like for us just to revisit and make sure that our language is such that we all know, including the people who come after us, as to exactly what our markets will be. And I think that's a great thing for our community and for our economy here in Huntsville. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Cynthia Atkins from the Bailey Cove Farmers Market, and I personally am a little confused about this issue. And maybe some of you could tell me if there have been complaints to the city about the markets? You know, we send out many letters every year, as do the other markets, to people within a certain range within the church and the market, to make sure that we don't have anyone with problems that, you know, we need to address, and that everyone in the community is okay with it. And we've never gotten any complaint, not ever, not the first one. And so I was just wondering if there have been any to the city, you know, about our markets?
You know, personally, I don't know of any, and I will ask Planning Department to address this.
Yes, we did get some complaints last year about the Green Street Market and onsite preparation of food.
Onsite preparation of food?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, you know, we are a church that's sponsoring this, and we are kind of in the business of following the rules. And if we just know what they are, we're glad to comply. We just would like to know what they are. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I'm Marilyn Evans. My address is 1009 West Moreland Avenue, and I'm the manager of the Green Street Market. And I think we'd like to start by saying thank you to all the people in the Planning Department for all the willingness they've had to work with us, and I think this is probably just an unfortunate misunderstanding on our part. I really was, we were very much in favor of the ordinance as written, until we realized that maybe there were things that we didn't understand, that interpretations that were going to be used that we didn't anticipate. And so I think what we'd like now is for a little time to go back and review those interpretations, and then rewrite a more clear ordinance, because we really were, we thought this was a good thing, and it has been a good thing, and all the things that Ashley and Marie and the whole zoning, the Planning Department have done have been very helpful. I just think they don't answer all the questions. They don't answer a lot of the questions about onsite preparation of food that I think are vital to a farmers market. That's part of our education mission, is to help people understand what to do with local ingredients. If we've got people there using local ingredients in a safe way, that can be a very, very important part of the market. So we just asked for a little more time, and I think it was, in my case anyway, a misunderstanding about what was involved in the writing. It was very, I thought it was great that it was general and not so specific. I thought that left some things open, and we found out in the variance meeting the other night that that didn't leave things open. And so we just like to make sure that the wording is clear enough, and we're all sure about what can and can't go on at the market. Oh. Well, you can't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mickey Ellis and I live at 1505 Montdale Road. What we're concerned about, and I don't know if you all can answer it or not, we were told that unless something was specifically mentioned in the ordinance, it would not be allowed. For example, music. The music has been such a fun part of our market. I haven't been to the others, but it's just, they aren't paid, are not paid. I'm, I'm gonna be sure you know that. And the food that's been served is, you know, taken care of and people have fun buying it and get things to go home for supper. And if you've ever been, it's children and babies and animals and music and flowers and fun. And I'm, I'm not the one to get credit, but you know how many people that have given us awards and stuff and people say, "Thank you for what you're doing for downtown." And that's, and the others in their areas, we're just having, I'm with Green Street too. But maybe we don't understand, can someone tell us tonight? You know, it's like, if it's not specifically in there, if it's not allowed, that's what we've been told. If it doesn't say you can have music, then you can't have music. So that may not be true. Is that true?
I am going to refer that question to Ms. Bostick. This is why we're going to miss her, by the way.
It's all triggered by business license. If they're unpaid performers, then they're fine. But if they go to get a business license for that event and they are paid, then that would not be permitted.
They're not. I mean, but that's not written down in the ordinance.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be. Not, everything has to be written. I mean, we, we, it would be impossible for us to write an ordinance that dealt with every situation that ever was gonna come up.
That's what I thought and that's why I'm asking it. Because this may be all unnecessary, but we've got several, Marilyn talked to me earlier in the, I wasn't there, but a group had a revised form of the ordinance. It seemed wonderfully reasonable to me and I, if you guys would look at it, I think everybody might like it. So anyway, I don't know what the procedure is, but just so you know.
Thank you very much. Marie, may I ask you also, because we've had several people mention onsite food preparation, can you address that?
Yeah, the way it is currently written, you could not have onsite preparation other than demonstrations, which we did add after our last public hearing. There was some concern about people who demonstrated the foods that they had there to sell and how you would prepare and use them. So we added that into the definition, so it was very clear that you could do that. What you're not permitted to do is have like the food trucks or the barbecue guys or the pizza guy that brings his tin and actually prepares food onsite. That would not be a permitted use the way it's currently written.
So on, on demonstrations or, that would just be demonstrations specifically and no serving, like samples of the prepared food?
Yeah, you could do samples, but what you couldn't have is like preparing something and then selling it.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, so you could do sample, you could give out samples of the prepared food.
That's the way it's currently written, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And, yes, sir?
I'd like to comment in on what you were just talking about and understanding why it would not be permitted because of the long-term holding of the food.
Let me stop you just a moment. We need your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Bryant, 3000 Clopton Street, Huntsville. In regards to the, the long-term holding of food and the health department regulations that would be brought in, and I just wanted to say, I, I could see, understand why certain food preparation would not be allowed because of the long-term holding and the health, the health department coming into play there. But I still think, you know, s- small amounts of food being prepared where it was to be eaten right away and rather than something that had been held for some hours and was subject to spoilage. I just wanted to clarify, understanding why you would not permit certain food preparation. That's all.
Thank, thank you, sir. Oh, I'm sorry, Marie.
Yeah, a couple of things, if I may. I think one thing that is lost in all this is that we're only talking about areas that are in residential districts that would have to get, if it were rewritten, a special exception or variance to do these things. In any commercial district other than C1, they could do live music, they could even pay bands to come if they wanted to. They could have onsite preparation of food, they could have food trucks, they could have all of this activity by right, the way it's currently written. So in either commercial or industrial or, a couple of the specialty districts as Ashley showed on the screen, it's only in areas that are zoned residentially or neighborhood business C1 because we don't allow any outside sales in our neighborhood business C1. That's why it's included. And they would be required to get a special exception at all and they would not be permitted to have the onsite food preparation. Now, the reason we don't allow the onsite food preparation in residential districts is because we don't allow food trucks in residential districts. We don't allow any kind of retail in residential districts. So this is kind of going above and beyond anything that's permitted of this type of intensity in a residential district. So I just, I just think it's important to kind of understand that as we're discussing the activities that are going on in these areas. Now, there are, I mean, the Green Street Market is somewhat unique in that they don't have any houses around them. There are churches and parking lots and commercial activities. The Bailey Cove Market also is not really close to a lot of residential districts, but there are many churches and schools that could have these farmer's markets and they would be immediately adjacent to homes. And so what we have to do is we have to look at citywide possibilities and know that if someone's got their barbecue grill right next to your backyard and it's 10 o'clock at night and it's a part of a farmer's market operation, that could be a problem for that residential neighborhood. So while I understand what they're trying to do, I live in a world where I see these things that happen and, and it's, it's amazing sometimes the way things happen. So maybe there's a way to rewrite it so that, and we're certainly willing to do that and I've told them all that, that we'll be more than happy to go back and look at that. But there are, there may, it may come with some trade-offs, like we started out with some additional conditions and that we took all those conditions out because we worked with them and we agreed that there haven't been issues with what has been occurring and that it didn't make sense for them to have to come back every year to the board of adjustment and no other conditions needed to be placed. And that may have to change. There may have to be a review. There may have to be stipulations on hours of operation so they can't go just, you know, crazy hours of the night. Or they, they may have to set up food preparation a certain distance from residential structures. Things like that would have to be worked out. So I'm certainly willing to do that, but I just want everybody to understand that the whole reasoning is just because it's in that residential district and that all of those activities and all those wonderful farmer's market and even what y'all, I mean, they're permitted in your right across the country, but they're predominantly not in residential districts.
May I ask when they, when they, uh, might proceed for a special exception in a residential district? Would it usually be considered, the hours of operation usually be considered as a part of the application for that special exception?
It could be. But it would be totally up to the discretion of the board and it may be something that, as our other ordinances, that could be especially detrimental to a residential area that we stipulate instead of leaving completely up to the discretion of the board.
Okay, okay. Uh, thank you, Marie. Yes, sir, would you give your name, please?
I'm Huey Reynolds, 2411 Rothmore Drive Southwest. I'm with the farmer's market at Latham United Methodist. We're next to the railroad track and the train usually passes by twice during our market hours. The question I have, we, our hours of operation were from three until seven from early May until the first week in October. And some of those times, I know we had four Tuesdays in a row where a Tuesday market, where it was 97 degrees plus, didn't reach 100, thank goodness. But the appearance of a snow cone truck enabled us, or trailer, enabled us to keep a whole lot of folks at the market and keep them hydrated. And I, I don't read in here that, well, I don't read it's prohibited, but I think it probably comes in one of your categories as prepared foods, though it's not pizza. So they're offering a service that would be very labor intensive for us to offer. I mean, we offer water, but I know we were able to keep families at the market with, with children, but there were a lot of, lot of adults who were there, who would be able to stay and to continue to shop with our farmers with that. So I don't, just as you look, Marie, at, or as the zoning board looks at rewriting this, consider we're, we're trying to make this an experience, a tolerable experience in a very hot time of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marie, if you give it away free, you don't have to do, you can do it, right?
Yes, sir.
As you answer, sir.
Free snow cones.
Give it away.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Strickland. I live at 3988 Hawks Way. I'm also with the Food Bank of North Alabama and the North Alabama Food Policy Council. And we have certainly enjoyed working with Marie and Ashley and the whole team at the planning department and helped serve as a conduit, a way of convening the key stakeholders in the, the drafting of this ordinance. And we'd be happy to continue to serve in that role should the dialogue need to continue.
Thank you very much. Yes, it's here. Yes, you may.
Well, this is a variant. Have we been for that period of time not zoned R1B anymore where we're commercial for that period? Is that what the difference is?
Well, you get a variance basically to have a use that's not permitted in that zone. So in a way, yes. See, the reason that it's really inappropriate to keep going for a variance on a temporary basis is because of variance, you're supposed to show a hardship on the property. And so that's why we're trying to make it a special exception, which means you just have to show non, non-detrimental impact to your surroundings as opposed to a hardship on the property. So in, in essence, you are being given, and you know, a variance because you can't use your property as, you know, a parking lot or a church. So you need to use it as a farmer's market, which is a commercial use in a residential district. So it's not a rezoning, but you are using it as commercial, which is it's not zoned for, so kind of, yeah.
That doesn't then grant you privileges as a commercial zone?
No, it's specific to what you request for. It's what you present at the board is what you specifically get.
Okay, okay. So our issue, our interest in having prepared food there, if we can do in the commercial zone, we have to present food.
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak with regard to urban agriculture? Yes, sir.
My name is Lee McBride. I'm at 8905 Hogan Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35802. And I simply want to state that I am in support of our farmer's market managers and their concerns, but I really specifically stood to simply say, "Thank you, Marie, for the process and the dialogue. It has been truly a joy to work with the city and as a citizen. It was a time in my life when I tried to spend time. It has been a joy and a privilege to work with you." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. I think I, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, hearing no further comment, the public hearing on urban agriculture is...
She had to, do you have a question?
Who does?
I have Marie.
Oh, okay. Well, Marie, I mean, Jackie, I have never known you not to stand up and just say it.
Well, I wanted to hear all they had to say because I'm not against the farmer's market itself. I'm really against allowing people to dig up their yards and grow crops in their yards and stuff to take to the farmer's market. Of course, as you know, the county commission farmer's market is having problems over there staying open for the country people and the farmers and they beg me to help them try to help it, keep it open. But then a lot of people in the city has gone into the farmer's market business, which is good because I go and I like to go. I don't, I don't go down there for the music and all other stuff, but to see what they got and to buy the stuff. But the way you're gonna allow it in this, no residential, they can't dig up their yard and put a corn crop, is that what you're telling me? Are, are you allowing, the zoning changed to allow anything they want to do pretty much? And I thought I saw animals sitting up there on one of those things.
They, they can have urban farms and community gardens with special exceptions in their residential areas.
Did I see farm animals?
You can have livestock in an urban farm.
What?
Yeah, urban farm includes animals, yes.
In the country or in the city?
In the city. They'd still have to comply with all the animal control regulations for distance restrictions, but you could still have...
So a chicken was a blessing compared to what I see up there tonight. Hey, y'all better do some thinking. Let me see this ordinance, send it back, let's rewrite, reread that thing. Because I thought I said animals and that's a chicken plus, plus many, much many more things. So you people need to take that back and do some studying. Like I said, I'm not against the farmer's market. I'm against you digging up your yards in the residential areas and there's a lot of commercial. Half the city. Marie, I'm gonna miss you because who am I gonna harp on when you leave? I've loved you. You and Dallas have kept me busy for the past 35 years and I'm gonna miss you. I am. But I, I hope you send that back and redo it because I want a copy of it. And when I seen that animal up there, it's fluffed my feathers again. Thank you.
It, it appears to me that, that those animals will be, any, any, any farming in a residential district other than personal gardens appears to me, from what Ashley presented, to be by special exception. Did I, which means that it has to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment at which time there will be public hearing, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And again, they still would have to comply with all the existing animal control regulations for distant separations. None of that's been changed.
Okay. Is there, are there any other comments or questions regarding the urban agriculture Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. And, um, and we proceed now to the development review, annual review for 2013.
Yes, ma'am. My name is James Vanderver. I'm with the City of Huntsville Long Range Plan Division. I'm also the editor of the Huntsville Development Review. It opens up. Scared me there. All right. The City of Huntsville's Long Range Plan Division is proud to present to the members of the planning commission, the 2013 Huntsville Development Review. In 2013, 1,702 residential dwellings were issued building permits, a 5.1% decrease over 2012. Of these, 979 were single-family units and 723 were multifamily. The total value of all residential buildings permitted in 2013 was approximately $79 million, down 1.9% from 2012. The top census tract for residential building permits by the number of units permitted in 2013 was 112, commonly known as the Martin Zert area. 319 units were permitted in that tract within Huntsville city limits. Tract 31, which includes downtown and the historic districts, came in second, thanks to an increase in multifamily unit construction. Tract 212, which encompasses most, much of southeastern limestone county, including Greenbrier, came in third. 1,335 residential units were granted certificates of occupancy in 2013, a 22.5% increase over 2012. That number includes 941 single-family units, a 1.5% increase from 2012, and 394 multifamily units, a 191.8% increase. The top tract for certificates of occupancy in 2013 was 1,335 residential units, a 22.5% increase over 2012. The top tract for certificates of occupancy was one oh six point two-two, the area around Providence with four hundred thirteen units, followed by tract one-twelve with two hundred fifty-seven units and tract one oh nine point oh one, the Hampton Cove area, with one hundred ninety-six units. Five hundred single-family lots were approved in two thousand and thirteen, an increase of sixty-one point eight percent from two thousand and twelve and the first increase in single-family approval since two thousand and seven. Six hundred multifamily units were also approved, an increase of thirteen point six percent over the previous year. Forty-one commercial lots were also approved. The largest single-family subdivisions by the total number of lots approved in two thousand and thirteen were Sanctuary Cove near the Goldsmith Schiffman Elementary School with one hundred and seven lots and McMullen Cove with eighty-five lots. The largest multifamily development approved last year was the two hundred forty-eight unit Legacy at Jones Farm Apartments in Jones Valley. According to the North Alabama Multiple Listing Service, two thousand four hundred and ninety-four single-family homes were sold last year in the city of Huntsville, an eight point one percent increase from two thousand and twelve. The average sales price for a single-family residence sold in two thousand and thirteen was two hundred thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars, an increase of one point two percent from the year before. One out of every four homes sold last year were in the one hundred fifty thousand to two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar range. The top census tracts for the number of single-family homes sold in two thousand and thirteen remained unchanged from two thousand and twelve, with one oh nine point oh one leading the pack with three hundred twenty-nine homes sold in that tract, followed by tract one-twelve with two hundred fifty-six homes and tract twenty-eight point oh two, the English Village Bell Mountain area in southeast Huntsville with one hundred sixty-one homes. The census tract with the highest average sales price for a single-family home in two thousand and thirteen was tract thirty-one, which had an average of six hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and four dollars. Tract nineteen point oh two, which includes the ledges, had the second highest at six hundred eighty-two thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars, followed by tract nineteen point oh three, the Jones Valley neighborhood, which had an average price of three hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars. The average price per square foot for homes sold in city limits in two thousand and thirteen was eighty-two, changed from two thousand and tw, unchanged from two thousand and twelve. The areas with the highest average per square foot price were ni, were tract nineteen point oh two at a hundred and eighty dollars, tract thirty-one at a hundred and seventy-six dollars and tract seventeen and eighteen point oh one, Blossom Wood and Montisano respectively, each at one hundred and fifteen dollars. For the first time, the city, the planning department has begun tracking days on market for houses sold in Huntsville city limits. In two thousand and thirteen, the three tracts with the lowest days on market were one oh five point oh two, the Carter's Gent area with ten eight, ten days, tract twenty-one, Low Mill, with forty-eight days and tract fourteen point oh one, the Creekwood Park area, with fifty-one days. Another new addition to the Development Review this year is sales price change data. The three tracts with the largest increase in sales prices from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen were thirty-one at sixty-eight percent, tract seven point oh one, the Davis Hills area, at thirty-four percent and tract twenty-seven point oh one, the Whitesburg School area, at twenty-five percent. The largest decreases were seen in lar, in tracks two point oh one, Edmonton Heights at fifty-four percent, tract twenty-one, that's Low Mill, at forty-seven percent and tract twelve, Terry Heights, at thirty-seven percent. Eighty-two non-residential building permits were issued in two thousand and thirteen, an eighteen percent decrease over two thousand and twelve. The top tracts for non-residential construction by the number of permits were fourteen point oh two, home to Research Park, and one oh six point two-two, the Providence area, where twelve permits were issued in each tract last year. Large commercial projects permitted in two, two thousand and thirteen include the Twickenham Square project downtown to be anchored by Publix as where, as well as the new Belk Store at Bridge Street. One hundred seventy point five acres were annexed into the city of Huntsville during two thousand and thirteen. The largest single landization was one hundred twenty point five acres. The city size as of December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen was two hundred ten point five five square miles. As you can see from this map, all but one annexation were concentrated in the Hampton Cove, Big Cove area. A thirty-five point two acre annexation near the North Parkway and Bobway intersection was the exception. The population of the city of Huntsville was ex, was estimated to be a hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and thirteen as of July first, two thousand and thirteen. This is an increase of four point one percent since the two thousand and ten census. Huntsville continues to be the fastest-growing major city in Alabama with an average annual growth rate of one point three percent over the past decade. This graph shows the population of Alabama's four largest cities since two thousand. As the other three, as the other three cities, Birmingham, Montgomery and Mobile, have experienced stagnant or even negative population growth over that time period, Huntsville has continued to record positive gains in population. A total of one thousand two hundred and ninety-three housing units were added in the city of Huntsville in two thousand and thirteen, bringing our total as of thir, December thirty-first to eighty-nine thousand six hundred and two units. This is a five point two percent increase in total housing units since the two thousand and ten census. You can find the full Huntsville Development Review report at HuntsvilleAL.gov slash planning slash Development Review. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. Next item of business is subdivisions. I'm going to ask Kimberly Battle if she'll give us the subdivision committee recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the subdivision committee, uh, met, uh, February nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We have the following recommendations. The first is Capital Park at seventy-two subdivision. The committee recommends preliminary approval on three lots. Move to approve.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on three lots.
Marie, is it in order for final?
It is with improvements to be completed by February the twenty-fifth of two thousand and fifteen.
Move to approve.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Capital Park at seventy-two apartments. The committee recommends preliminary, preliminary approval on two hundred and thirty-three units. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for boundary plat approval on two hundred and thirty-three units. Move to approve.
Second.
Um, all in favor, please, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third item, Coventry Phase Three at McMullen Cove, a re-subdivision of lots fourteen through twenty-one of Coventry Phase Two at McMullen Cove, re-subdivision of tract three of Coventry Phase One at McMullen Cove. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on eight lots. Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on eight lots.
Do I hear a second?
Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marie, is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it is.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item, Cruz Place subdivision, re-subdivision of lot one and other lands a minor. The committee recommends layout and approval on one lot with the following waiver, reduce utilities and drainage easements from ten foot to five foot alongside and rear lot lines, alongside and rear lot lines. Uh, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on one lot.
Marie, is it in order for final approval?
It is.
Move to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, Huntsville Park, re-subdivision of lot one, block twenty-seven, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixth item, Meadow, Meadows Boulevard Connector Road. The committee recommends preliminary, preliminary approval of the road only. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seventh item, Overland Cove Phase Two, re-subdivision of tract A of Overland Cove. The committee recommends relayout and, and re, re-preliminary approval on seventy-one lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot lines between lot one eighty-six and the common area, lots one eighty-five and one eighty-six and lots one seventy-one and one seventy-two. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Eighth item, Strong Commercial Center subdivision Phase Two, re-subdivision of lots two and three of Strong Commercial Center Phase One, re-subdivision of lot two of Strong Commercial Center subdivision, a minor. The committee made a motion for layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two, two and three, non-perpendicular lot lines between lots one and three. Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is also presented for final approval on three lots.
Is it in order for final, Marie?
Yes, ma'am.
Move to approve.
Uh, is, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The ninth item, Walnut Cove Face, uh, Walnut Cove Two, Phase Two at Lake Forest. The committee recommends lay, relayout and re-preliminary approval on twenty-eight lots. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location character and extent, the first item is Jones Park Parking Garage Upgrade and Park Improvements, number eight-ten. The public hearing was held. Would like to move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second item is Electric Vehicle Quick Charger, number eight-oh-nine. The public hearing was held. Would like to move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, zoning, um, Sharon, would you give us the zoning committee report?
Yes, ma'am. First item on the agenda is the Overton Annexation Zoning, fourteen hundred. A public hearing was held this evening. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is the Drake Annexation Zoning, fourteen-oh-one. The public hearing was held this evening. Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item is Hypes Annexation Zoning. Public hearing was held. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item is the Zoning Ordinance Amendment, Urban Agriculture. Amend zoning ordinance, Article Three. Definition, amend Articles Ten, Seventeen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Forty, Forty-Two, Forty-Three, Forty-Four, Fifty, Fifty-One, Fifty-Two, Fifty-Four, Sixty, Sixty-Four and Sixty-Six. Uses permitted and amends Article Ninety-Two, Board of Adjustment, to add regulations concerning urban agriculture. A public hearing was held. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes, um, given the conversation tonight and speaking with Marie and the mayor, we would like to recommend that we send this back to committee and take one more look at it so that we can weigh out some of the conversation that we've heard tonight because, Ashley, everybody's done a terrific job, but maybe if you can be patient with us, let's just give it one more look and then bring it back and have everything smoothed out.
Thank you. Any other comment? Uh, a point of order, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, on the floor, can, can...
It would be a motion to return it to committee and a second and a vote on that motion and it would take precedence on the main motion to be sent back to committee.
Would you...
I'd like to make a motion then that we return it back to the committee for further study.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion to return it to committee for further study and a second. Is there any discussion on returning it to committee?
Just help me understand the, the goal of returning it back to committee. Um, there was a lot of discussion that I kind of considered as it being, uh, very particular to specific instances and with this already being written to be something that governs the city as a whole, I'm trying to understand what we would be accomplishing by sending it back again.
I think, uh, given Marie's comments and some of the, the special tweaking that perhaps we could do, some of the give and take that would have to occur, I think some of the organizations that have already had established markets in residential areas probably need a little bit more consideration. By and large, I, I think the ordinance works really well. Marie is a hundred percent correct because what she and Ashley and everybody have to do, as the planning commission knows, is have to look at the broader view of the entire city. And most of these ordinances and regulations are, are written for the offenders, the people, the, the one or two folks are gonna take full advantage of it. So, but given the fact that there's this much concern, we'd like to just take one more stab at it and, uh, hopefully third time's the charm.
Any, any other comments or discussion? Okay, we have a motion to send it back to committee. All in favor of sending the Urban Agricultural Ordinance back, amendment, back to committee for further discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it, it, the motion carries and it will be returned to committee and hopefully we'll see it again soon. Um, and is that all of your report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item is invocation and extension of bonds. Marie?
Yes, ma'am. We would recommend the invocation of Nature's Landing at the Reserve Phase Four, Stratford at McMullen Cove and Jones Farm Park.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and there being no further business before the Planning Commission, the meeting is adjourned.